Well, it's seven o'clock, so we'll call them or meeting to order. And is there any additions to the agenda? If not, we'll entertain motion. Richard? Any discussion on Richard's motion? Hearing none? No question of favor? Anybody opposed? Seeing none, carried. Okay, adoption of the regular minutes of November the fourteenth. Any questions, errors, omissions? If not, move some. Any discussion on Liam's motion? Hearing none, I'll call a question of favor. It's carried. Okay, the committee of the whole was added. It wasn't much to it, so we came and added it to it. So is there any questions on the committee of the whole minutes from? Okay, now somebody, Barbara? Any discussion on Barbara's motion? Hearing none, I'll call a question of favor. Any opposed? Seeing none, carried. Okay, now we'll move on to delegation. Well, we have to start off before we have our delegation, we have a few long-term service awards. So the first one is Dave Soder. For those that might not realize, Dave's been with us for fifteen years. You know, prior to that, Dave was with the Parks Department for years. And he spent all his time at the arena and the pool. And thank you very much, Dave, for being, you know, there all the time. I know we get great, great comments made about the staff at the arena. I don't know about the pool. They don't generally see you guys much. You guys, they're too early or too late.
You can splash him when he is there, though.
But no, but we do get great, great remarks about how, you know, our staff is so good at the arena, for sure. So thanks again, Dave. And that's a fifteen-year service work, so thank you again. Our next one is Teresa. And for some of you guys that never get an opportunity to see Teresa, she hides in a little corner in the office there. But again, this is another fifteen years. So you started as a front desk clerk and moved to the tax clerk position. We lost, we were able to increase in your hours when Jan retired, so thank you very much. And Kim, it's been great that we've got another long term. Most of our staff has been on for years, so it's much appreciated. So thank you. The next one is Mr. Birch. So Kim, Stu has been with us for twenty years. And prior to that, you know, he was with the elevator. And we stole him away from there. And then they got rid of the elevator. He did such a great job that they abolished him.
They just destroyed him when I left.
Maybe it was the other way around, and you kind of left it in the back.
Well, maybe, maybe, yeah.
But anyway. No, and Stu started off just as a temp laborer, then worked as way up into lead hand, and then public works for him for the past eight years. And, you know, it's just been great working with Stu. And, you know, been on the fire department through the years and participated in the community so much. And, you know, again, another long-term employee that we had, so Stu's been with us for twenty years. Thank you, Stu.
Thank you.
Thank you for your support. Okay, the last one we have is Kim's. And so Kim's been with us for twenty-five years, which is hard to believe. Prior to that, he worked for Shawn E., and then he worked. So it started as a laborer and became town foreman in 2003, which he loved for eleven years, and then became CEO in 2014. So it lasts eight years. He's been our CEO. So again, thank you, Kim, for twenty-five years of service. And like I said earlier, we're so fortunate. We do have some real long-term ones. Don't think that thing about them, that's all of a sudden we might see, so.
Well, you can read that statistic at the very top line on there.
Yeah, this group of four employees have combined seventy-five years of experience in Town Vulcan. So, I mean, but again, prior to that, too, I mean, all our employees have been with us majority for lots of years. Lots of them have, that have left our community, have left our community. You know, they just didn't leave us to go to work in another institution or facility in our community. And so, you know, if it wasn't for our good staff, facility, our community wouldn't be as good. We get so many great remarks about how our community looks. And it starts at the top and works right down to our people on the bottom. So thank you very much for everybody that's put in so much time and make up things about this today. So thank you. And if you'd like to stay, I know Stu would love to stay.
I know past tonight. I know him, so.
Was your ride fine?
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Thanks for staying.
For staying, Kim?
I didn't know that was an honor.
Well, I don't know. Anyway, it's great that we have such great staff, so. And so now we'll move on to, we have a presentation from Ursula. So Community Futures Highway, so floor is yours, so you can have a seat.
So thank you for having me. Before I start on this slide presentation, I wanted to just give you an update what's been happening in our Lake of the Woods and how that is affecting Vulcan right now. So I've been Executive Director for the last year and a half. And part of what I'm going to talk to you about, anyway, is that we are in the process of changing our Articles of Association. But apart from that, we still continue our programming, which, as you know, includes providing funding for people that are turned down by banks, so we continue to do that. Our current loan portfolio is sitting around just over six million dollars. Now that is largely due to the fact that we were one of the agencies providing the triple R F funds, the Real Relief and Recovery Fund, which was the twin to the C F, a loan set the government provided during the pandemic. And we have about three and a half million just in those, like we gave about a hundred and twenty-three loans in the short of the year. So that was a fair amount of work. And then we are running some programs, and I'm so happy to say so the Smart Start program that I actually approached council about, what was it, about a year ago? Roughly, right? We have a participant from Vulcan. We have two mentors from Vulcan, which is amazing. Totally love it. Thank you for your support with that. And the program has started, and they are in class and actually presenting them tomorrow. So and they have been paired up with the mentors and so far so good, so this is wonderful. And we are also running our DSS program. So this is part of the digital economy program that the province of Alberta put out. So we have a dedicated staff member that is supporting business owners with anything regarding the digital presence. So this is free. People can just contact us. And they get help with websites, branding, marketing, social media, web platforms to post on, that kind of stuff, free of charge, up to ten hours per person. And the last but not least is we have an ongoing EDP program, Entrepreneurs with Disabilities Program. I like the name of that. It is a program for any entrepreneur that identifies with any challenges they have. This can be mental, this can be physical, anything goes. And with that, under that program, they can have up to sixty hours of one-on-one coaching as a dedicated coach. So we have coaches for social media, we have general business coaches, we have coaches for finance. And so again, if they are anywhere in the business cycle, from startup to, or ideal stage to startup to already in business, if they say, I'm struggling with anxiety, I'm struggling with ADHD, I have a bad back, literally, right? They can contact us, we get them through the intake process. Not one good, we have never had a turn down so far, because we need to apply on every hunt. And then we set them up with a coach, and they get that extra assistance, which is one of the things we're there for, right? Hope everybody fulfill the dream and live it. So now to the board, unless you have any questions about that. No, to the changes, I should say, which includes the board. Chugging the gun here. Okay, so if you will go to, yeah, so. Actually, I think one map please. No, not the other way around. Oh, did I, oh, yeah, I missed a slide, never mind. So yes, the first one, my apologies. Okay, so our current Articles of Association are quite old, and they are not current at all. So I think I brought that in really stark highlights, unfortunately. So things like highlight meetings is actually not allowed in our current Articles of Association, so it's high time to rewrite them. Also, there weren't very many clear guidelines on how to conduct meetings, what kind of quorum we needed for what kind of decisions, stuff like that, so the typical rules and processes. And the other part is, and I don't know how much you know about this, but right now we have technically ten shareholder regions. And each shareholder region appoints two members to the board. So the ten shareholder regions are Vulcan, of course, and Vulcan County, Nanton. You have the very tip of Willow Creek. Literally, if you draw a line about ten kilometers out of Nanton east to west, you have that part of Willow Creek, which isn't very much, right? High River, Foothills County, Oktoks, Black Diamond, Turner Valley, and Caninasus Country, and Tredmont District. So Caninasus has chosen to actually be serviced by another C F, because that C F services the entire Bubba corridor, which makes way more sense. We can't even get to that point of the year, just about now, right? Like, two weeks, it will be close again. Black Diamond, Turner Valley, after elections today, they will be Diamond Valley as of January first. So that's going to be combined. And then quite frankly, Willow Creek, we've had some great council board members from there, but we are servicing such a tiny little part of Willow Creek, that it makes sense to call it Nanton area, right? So we have about seven districts, really. Now, with that said, right now, we have officially ten. And we get two shareholder labels from each, which means we have a board of twenty, which is not very efficient, to say the least. And makes for very long meetings, potentially. And the other part is that our board right now is divided, that in that only half of the board actually knows what's going on in terms of fiscal happening. So half of our board, all the members, so we have an elected official and a member-at-large from each region. Only the members-at-large are the ones that are allowed to adjudicate the loans. And since the loans, as you just heard, make up a big part of our fiscal bucket, that's a big part that half of the board doesn't know about, right? Okay, before I go into that a little bit more, let's go to the next slide. So apart from that, our board has other responsibilities. So this is a governing board, it's not a committee, which means it's supposed to set the strategic direction for our organization and establish policy, like as much as by us, like loan policies and HR policies and all that good stuff, right? Like I said, provide financial stewardship of all of our finances. We get a very limited amount of operational funding every year that hasn't increased since Stephen Parker's time. And other than that, we have the loan monies that we administer. And it's also supposed to, of course, monitor what the organization does in and of itself and provide direction. And as I mentioned, includes the investment review committee, which is that committee that besides on loans and is made out of members-at-large. So it is not a committee. It requires way more time involvement than a regular committee, because people are at times as global a test, have pages and pages of stuff to read, even worse for members-at-large that actually need to look through the loan proposals and everything and bring themselves up to speed. So it's a fair commitment. So what we are proposing, if you will go to slides further, or what we have proposed to the board, and the board has actually approved, is that we change the board. So there are several reasons for that. With the appointments and with elected officials, there's always some attrition after terms are up. But with the appointments, it also means that we usually lose at least half, last election was two-thirds, actually, before that, three-quarters of the board every four years. That makes continuity very, very difficult. It takes somebody on average eighteen to twenty-four months to understand what our board, what our organization's about. It's not a quick learn it and understand it all thing. So losing somebody, losing a large part of the board every three to four years is a problem for our continuity. And like I said, it's a governing board. Smaller boards make for faster decisions, shorter meetings, you know, all those things, better discussions around the table, so everybody can actually weigh in. Like, imagine your council being twice that size. That would be really fun at times, I'm sure, right? And the other thing is that at this point, we are unable to recruit for specific skills, which would be really, really advantageous for us, imagining having a accounting professional on our board, seeing how we deal with a lot of numbers. Having somebody like a lawyer on board would be amazing, right? Getting that.
Somebody who's qualified to make the decisions that the board makes.
Yeah, not just that, but it can also likely ask that and can lend some professional expertise to the matter, too, because we often have questions that, you know, going to the legal realm or going to the more accounting realm. And so then it's really, really beneficial to have that there, of course. And the other thing is, and actually Kim has been amazing. We've had a new member-at-large like this after our other one resigned. But not every community is like that. And so we've had several member-at-large positions open and unfilled, because quite frankly, I realize that town administration's first priority is not finding board members for us. Shouldn't be, right? And can totally understand that Kim, again, has blown me out of the water, has moved out of the water like it was amazingly fast. But that is an exception, not the rule. And so we are without board members. And part of these members that I'm missing make up the IRC, this investment review committee. So it's a big deal, and we don't have enough people, right? So, yeah, so that's basically why we're looking at changing the board as part of that whole restructuring of the Articles of Association. So the new board will look like this. It will have a maximum of nine members. As I mentioned, we will have effectively actually seven shareholder regions that we will service. So there will be, the idea is still that we get a member from each shareholder region, but that we have a couple of extra spots. Somebody's really interested, doesn't have to be Oktoks. I'm really, really pushing to service the whole region, not just Oktoks. Yes, that's where our office is, but we have a region to service. So that includes Vulcan, Vulcan County, everybody else. So the. So we have shareholders right now, so the municipalities are shareholders officially. There were never any shares actually issued. It was just a shareholder agreement signed. That said, and I don't think even money changed hands, and if it was, it was a dollar. So, you know, in laptop, anything else. However, the way we are set up in this apart-nine company, we still have, as per our Articles of Association, shareholders, but they will be synonymous with directors and members. So we will not have members out of the large, like usual nonprofits have like a membership, a place membership. That's not how we function at all. We don't have membership like at large like that. Whoever sits on our board will be members, and that's it. There will be no other people as members in the organization. And all members, board members, will be at-large members. That doesn't preclude an elected official from serving on our board. However, it would be in their capacity as a private citizen, not as an elected official unless it's on purpose, so that it's a different hat they wear. They're not representing council, they're not representing a municipality. They're there as a private individual, right? The other thing that we're looking at is that the at-large members then will also be, like, there will only be one board. There will be no separate investment review committee anymore. This board will see everything. They will adjudicate all the loan applications, so that there's complete transparency. We don't have this two-tier system where half of the board doesn't know what the other half is doing, have to trust that they're doing a good job, right? And yet they are all fiscally responsible supposedly. So that just doesn't sit right with a lot of people. And three-year terms with a maximum of nine years. It's actually mandated to us by our contribution agreement, our agreement with the federal government. Like I said, still recruited from all the regions. So in terms of service, nothing changes. In fact, I hope we'll be more efficient, right? Because less time is spent with administration. And we hope to continue collaborating with you, because we can't do it all alone. And it's important to have that relationship and that mutual interest in helping the business owners, right? In all the regions. So that's about the new board. And then the next part would be, so like I said, we had a meeting on October twenty-seventh. At that meeting, our Board of Directors did approve the new Articles of Association that stipulate a board like that. Now, my initial understanding was we needed to go and ask everybody else to also agree with it and then sign the shareholder resolution, as it turns out. So the board, being a governing board, can make that decision. However, I still wanted to come and present to every council. I feel that is, you know, the appropriate thing to do and respectful and make sure that you understand what we are asking, why we are asking. And so the request is really to relinquish your shares to C F H. And in C F H, and as per the board's decision, and authorize Kim to sign that shareholder resolution that we sent. Yeah, that basically does that. And then the next part will be the next step. So I have six out of my ten shareholder regions that have responded and have already agreed to do that. So it will be seven, hopefully. And then I'm presenting to High River Council in December as well. And then I have two other shareholders that I'm working with right now. And so once I have everything back, and hopefully everybody will be on our board, then we will be sending everything to corporate registries. And once we hear back from them, we will transition. In the meantime, and we just talked about this at the last board meeting, we will elect a committee, we have put together some ideas for a committee out of former board members. So people who are familiar with C F that don't have a current stake in being on the board, who will then see who wants to stay on the board and then also take and see if anybody else is interested, right? Possibly help recruit some people as well for the new board. And then once we get everything back from corporate registries, the idea is that we have the new board in place and that there will be a seamless transition. The old board officially resigns, the new board comes on. And some people will stay for continuity's sake. We have three right now, that said, they would stay, hopefully they'll be some more. And then we can continue on with our services. Sorry, that was a bit longer, I think, than I was supposed to.
How many staff do you keep, like, to actually?
So there's five of us in the office right now, including myself. And then one of, one of the five is the extra person I hired on for that DSS program that's on contract. So that contract ends March thirty-first.
So if you're still saying that you're hoping to attract somebody to be on the board from each region?
Correct.
If you can't, then you'll fill in from somebody from somewhere else?
Well, we do need to have a board of at least five or six. Like, the minimum board size is three, but at that point of time, our articles, our new articles stipulate that their main job is to find other board members and that they can't really fully function as a board, because three is just too little, right? So the idea is very much to find somebody from each community. That is what we're going to be trying our hardest to do. And we have parked these things to Smart Start, more connections in the community now, which is wonderful. And I'm fairly confident that we'll manage it. If we really, really can find somebody, then we'll try from an adjacent community first before, you know, we go somewhere else where, you know, I don't want to have, and I could put it this way, I don't want to have a board that's half out of Oktoks. I really, really don't, because I don't think it would represent the region we're serving, and that's really important.
And then, so obviously, the, you guys will be doing the attraction and retention and education of the board members.
Absolutely.
And so you'll be doing the advocating for that, to try and find that board member from each region.
Absolutely, yeah.
And now I appreciate, you know, your philosophy of having people that have stayed on for three, three years and then, and trying to, I mean, it's not realistic that that philosophy falls through on forever, but in your, your area, do you have any, for your, people that take the key roles, like your chair, vice-chair, and all of them, do you have term limits on them?
See, three years and nine years total. This is.
So you don't turn them out, say that you can only stay on as chair for two years or whatever?
Oh, right now, our term is one. What we're going to be shooting for is three. So the same as their term on the board, right?
Yeah, because I sit on another organization that already used that philosophy, because, you know, it's not really democratic. The most democratic way is that each chair gets the, every year when you put the chair's names up, and that's the most democratic system. Where, because ours, this other one that I've invented, says that the chair can only be on for so long, and then they're off. And there's no, and so then, you know, so if you're in the middle of a project, then all of a sudden, you lose your chair and you lose that stability of that chair, I guess, is what the philosophy of it is right now.
Yeah, so we have not set a term limit for the chair at this point of time in the new Articles. Actually, an excellent point. That said, we find that it rotates usually with every three years or so anyways, naturally. I'm really glad we're moving away from the one year, because with our signing authorities and everything else, we have a fair amount of things that need to be double-signed, you know, as a nonprofit and stuff. Changing that every year, going through the bank every year is not.
Yeah, it's pain.
Exactly.
Yeah, no, and I think that, you know, I mean, again, too, you know, I appreciate the philosophy behind it, you know, but on the other hand, there's a lot of logistics that, you know, that people don't realize, you know, it takes two or three months to get some of that stuff changed, then all of a sudden, you're theoretically almost changing it again, and it just doesn't always work, so.
And you have corporate registries and all kinds of other things, yeah.
One of the other things that Ursula and I talked about quite extensively was reporting and keeping the former stakeholders involved. And we talked about just sending out updates to council the way that other committees do. You know, it's not a, it's not a committee of the town, but it's still something we have vested interest in, in our community, so. Like I said, a regular reporting. Because basically, we got that before from having those counselors on board.
Thank you. I forgot to mention that, absolutely. So yes, so going forward, that is my commitment to you, that I keep you up to date on what's going on. And quite frankly, if you want me to come and present in person, I'll be happy to do so. Just let me know, I'll often even see my face.
Hopefully, but it's warming.
That would be nice.
Okay, any other questions, Ursula? Well, thank you very much. I mean, like I said, it's kind of a major change in the philosophy we've seen, but. And again, some of them haven't been participating in it for very long. But I do appreciate, you know, a board of twenty is sometimes very, you know, hard, hard to rule, but, you know.
So I don't know how, whether you do that later or something. Most of the other councils that I presented to actually like do a motion to.
So we have it, we have it as item eight point one on the agenda, the first one under current business, and it's.
On the road.
And just for your information before we leave, the actual recommendation is that council for a committee future shareholder resolution is presented, tracks to the mayor and C A O, the executor, a resolution on behalf of the town. If that's the motion that they would like to put forward.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Ursula. Again, you're welcome to stay.
Thank you, I think.
Ursula, I'll let you know about the resolution first by tomorrow.
Thank you so much.
That was a trip. Okay, those are delegation presentations, so we will move on to correspondence. So we have the Town of Oxlough Public Service Letter. Any comments on? That one?
Nothing really surprising there.
No, not really. The next one is the Town of Panoka. And I do appreciate their concerns, and I think it's very similar to what the bus are seeing. Hopefully, we will see some major changes in the next, next little while.
I didn't realize Panoka was a volunteer place of origin.
Probably volunteer like ours are.
Oh, they say they're unpaid, and you.
Well.
The chiefs might not be, though.
Yeah. Okay, then move on to the SEWA briefing update. Again, we try and do that on a monthly basis, just to keep people up to date. We just ran into difficulties, and so we will probably add some of this stuff that, if you read this briefing and you look at most of our briefings, it has some stuff that's the same every time. Well, we'll be adding more to the.
Stuff that'll stay the same.
Because we're having people that don't understand some of it, so the only way we're finding that we can make it so they understand it is to put it out every month, so. so.
More stuff that's the same.
More stuff of this thing, right. So any questions on any of those three or comments?
So, somewhere along the way, I missed, I thought you were the chair.
I'll say what?
Yeah. But it says, well, this, this is the review committee?
Yeah.
Ray Jessica is part of it?
Yes, Ray, no, Ray's not on the review committee. He is on a, he, he is an executive, on the executive committee, and also, yeah, he's on the executive.
Okay.
So when she talks about having a board of twenty, we have a board of eighteen, executive of six, and then we have a steering committee with three.
So is that correct? When it says Chair Jessica?
Yeah, he chaired, he chaired, we had, then we broke off and had one that looked after the waste volume-
Waste volume?
And he chaired it. And then we had one for transportation, which we had another gentleman chair it. And it turned out that Ray did ninety percent of the work, you know, and partly because he worked for the, the Newell County Waste Authority. So he had all those contacts. He just formed all his contacts and just, you know, updated, so it was so much easier for him to do. But yeah, he chaired that committee. And, and there is an example, too. Again, you know, according to our bylaws, we can only, you can only stay chair for two terms, like, two, two-year, year terms. So because we didn't have an AGM during COVID, my term still carried on. So now they're pushing to say that they shouldn't, because of the negotiations, we're dealing with these three groups, that they're trying to push the chair's position as far as it can go, so we don't have to change chair midstream. And again, we get that from both the legal and from the, but it's in our bylaws. And so that's partly why now, you know, I mean, it's, it's easy to just say, you know, we want your chair to stay or your chair to leave. But once it's in your bylaws, then you have to go through and it takes a year to change your bylaws. So it's, it's a pain. So that's why, you know, I was hoping that they wouldn't get caught with the same thing, just allow the membership to change the chair at the whim of a membership. So that was mine. So I, I understand what Ursula's trying to say, but, you know, I just don't want them to run into the same complications that are, that we're running into, you know, or go into it knowing that it could haunt them. Okay, anything else on any of those three? If not, can we have somebody to move? Okay, um, Richard? Any discussion on which motion? And now, call question, favor, opposed, so now, carry unanimously. Cash Davis.
As you can see, we've obviously got the loan processed for the industrial, and we're in, it's paying out, so we, cash flow wise, in our bank account, it's looking fairly, fairly flush right now, but you know, we're, our reserves, that we're sitting above two million, Mark, so a million of that will be spoken for.
Okay, any questions on any of those five items on the? If not, some issues, Cash Davis, Barbara? Any discussion on Barb's motion? We're in now, the favor. It's carried unanimously. Year to date?
Uh, this is the summary to October 31st. We had had a budget meeting on Friday that brought you to the middle of November, so you've, you've seen more up to date than this, but this, everything, unless there's something from council that stood out on this that we didn't discuss at the, at the budget meeting, really, we're, the budget is looking pretty good shape. The thing that throws off the numbers is the, again, I pointed out every month, is the money you receive from the county.
Yeah, that fell into that sewer, right?
Yeah, in and out. We currently are holding it in contingency reserve.
On firefighting there, the variance, like, we paid that seventy-seven thousand dollars a year, right?
Yes.
So we still have to pay that thirty-five and change, do we?
Depend on what their last bill will be.
That one, yeah.
Yeah, and, yeah, just, it's a quarterly thing, so we're doing our last.
Okay, any other comments or questions? If not, somebody wish to leave? Cole? Any discussion on Cole's motion? And now, call questions, favor, opposed, carry unanimously. Okay, bylaws and policies, Nine in the Line advertisement.
Yeah, so this is more of a policy review and kind of clarification. We had a request, obviously, you've all had a chat through the report. We had a request from Nine in the Line Brewery to advertise in the arena. And our current policy says that we can't advertise liquor, tobacco, or at all content. The question came up, were advertising a, an establishment as opposed to advertising liquor? The guidelines that we set out with the ALCG information is very specific on what it means to advertise liquor. So it was more, we want council to have a discussion, give us some direction on, on that feelings. It's worth noting that other facilities, as you put in the report, this are allowing liquor stores and, and breweries and a set of places that serve liquor, like restaurants, bars, those sort of things, to advertise in, in other arenas. So, so it's more for your discussion, unless you have any specific questions about the report.
Have we seen an example of what they plan to do? Have we seen anything, of showing anything?
No, it was just their, their logo and, and a sign for their establishment, is what was discussed so far.
I wouldn't, sorry, I'm not done yet, but I wouldn't mind seeing something, I'd like to see what they're doing. I really would, you know, because I look at it and I think, you know, it's a number of kids that are in here. I want to make sure it's, it's doing what it's supposed to be and not doing what it's not supposed to be, you know?
Right. Yeah. My assumption would be their branding, which is the, which is the elevators, but I can only assume that.
Go ahead. This is pretty discretionary. You're not gonna, I mean, so with this bylaw, if you change it, does that make it so?
This isn't a, this isn't a bylaw change or a policy change unless you would like to. This is clarification on, on the policy itself.
Right, so it says, no advertising of liquor, but I don't think a business would be considered advertising liquor, right? It's just, I don't know. I think that they should be able to advertise in the arena or town facilities.
Barbara? I think it is actually hazy, to be really honest, because-
It's which third?
Um, I'm gonna say, having Nine in the Line advertise could be looked at as hazy, because they, they don't really serve food, they just serve beer, right? And so does that open it for liquor stores as well? So if we, if we say yes to them, I'm just saying, that opens it for liquor stores, which of course, that's all they sell, too, is liquor. I, I'm, I'm not saying I'm opposed to it, because, you know, but I'm just saying, this is worth a conversation, because, like you said, Richard, the general amount of people who are using the arena are below eighteen years of age, and the adults that come to watch their children see the advertisement, you know. So I'm not opposed to it, but I'm just saying, it opens it up to, that's what they're advertising.
Cole?
Um, I have two comments, I guess. The first one would be, I, I've been in this establishment, I've taken my kids into it. It's a very family-friendly establishment. Adjacent to the rink is a lounge where kids also go, and there's consumption of alcohol, and there's advertisements in there. And I feel like a precedent has already been set. What I mean by that is, I was looking the other day about, around with the other advertisements, and this is a little out there, but this is how I see it. There's a pharmaceutical company advertising there. They sell opioids legally to people, which is way more addictive and way more of a pandemic than alcohol consumption at the moment. And, but they sell a product specific to, as a pharmacy would, that is harmful to, to people, but it's legal. I don't see any difference.
Oh, sorry.
It's, I don't go to the arena with curbing that often. I know we advertise there. Does the, did the Legion or the hotel, or did the hotel, when it was in existence, did not, did they advertise there?
I don't believe the hotel did, but, and the Legion's advertising company has gone away in the last few years. I'd have to look to see if they have in the past.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, based on, on those conversations about the opening it to liquor stores, that was what it was brought for, so that's why that's included in this. And that was the example that was brought back to it. We have a neighboring arena that has, that they allow liquor stores to advertise with it. And the basis of that was, they're advertising the establishment, not the product. So, and that's, when you look at the ALGC stuff, they're very specific that you're not advertising products, you're advertising your business. So we, we are in an open meeting, but a good example of sponsorship of a larger-scale distillery in a neighboring community, the High River, Highland Distiller's sponsors and advertises in, you know, a lot of recreation stuff. So that's one of the things that was brought up to us.
I have a comment on that, too, so it brings up an interesting thought to me. Anyways, I, I look at the idea of what Barb said and what Cole said. I often wonder, okay, so we do this, and the next step is if we do let liquor stores in, then the cannabis come in. But, but I'm just saying, now, you, you've set a precedence, and when I say this, can you legally stop something that's legal? You know what I'm saying? What's the next step, is what I'm saying.
So I can't answer that. The provincial government has very specific advertising for cannabis and that, and they can't advertise it until they change those.
That's right.
Go ahead.
But they're also a legal substance.
It's a right.
And I'm going to say liquor is just as bad as some of the opioids, like, it causes a lot of issues in our society. So I'm just saying that, yeah, it's another addiction. And I'm just saying that, is this, whether a neighboring community does or doesn't, I don't think we should, as a community, should make our decision based on them. And like I said, I'm not saying I'm against it. I'm just saying, I think we need to think about it before we kind of jump in and just say, yeah, of course, you know, because we, we love the establishment, the people.
That's why it's asked for clarification.
Yeah.
The request is there.
So do we say yes to them and no to the liquor store? This, this is, you know, you're just kind of opening up a box here and-
That's, that's what we're asking for.
Yeah.
The easy thing is to say no.
That's an easy thing, but is it the right thing?
I'm not, I'm not sure. I mean, I mean, you know, we, we moved a lot of sponsorship, a lot of things that were, you know, youth-oriented because of our philosophy behind smoking, drinking, drug issues. And, you know, it has affected a lot of them, but yet, you know, most of them have survived through that philosophy, but go ahead.
All right, I'm, yeah, I'm torn on this. My first thought was, just as a history, like, I was thinking, no, but then, you think of sponsorship. I grew up watching Molson Hockey Night in Canada. So, yeah, it's a, yeah, that's definitely something to look into.
Yeah, most horse events, you know, like the, that were involved were with some degree of cigarette smoking, drinking things, and yet, you know, they promote, you know, promote, you know, golfing. There isn't a sport out there, I don't believe, that hasn't in its history. Again, like you said, so, I mean, again, that, that's not to say it's right or wrong. It's just that, you know, it has definitely changed. Everything that you've seen is that it's gone away from it. So anyway, go ahead.
So, so one of the things for consideration for your discussion portion of this is, when we put together the recommendation to either approve or deny, there's very specific wording in there, as per the policy, and in accordance to the current ALGC advertising guidelines. So currently, the ALCG guidelines for specifically alcohol allow for it to be advertised. And so if we're looking for direction for you, if you were to allow it, we would stay within that ALCG guideline. And if that were to change, then we could amend with it. Or, right now, it's just not knowing council's feeling on, on whether it should be forward or not.
I read that, and that's great on paper, but, like, I can't drink, right? Because that was everything that was. But, and that's just, some people can, some people can't, right? And so I look at it, and I think, and I'm not saying, I'm not making my decision based on, like, I'm basing my decision on what's good for the town. So I, you know, just the idea of, like, it's, it's, it seems to do quite well, this business, every time I go by, it seems like there's people in there, and it's a nice establishment. They put down some good claim for that, but I guess my only concern is, what's the next one that pops out of the box and says you did that? Why can't I? You know, and then we're into this debate again. And so I, 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 again, I'd like to see what the sign says. And I'm sure it's just gonna be branding, you know, probably, you know, and everybody in town knows what it is.
They'll probably have brewery in it, probably Nine in the Line Brewery again.
Yep.
I would, I would, I would assume.
We haven't seen, their, their branding is very specific. And one of the conversations we had was the Cedar Vista. So if the Cedar Vista, or the country inn that it's called now, if they called up to advertise in the arena, as per our policy, based on it being majority of a, of a motel hotel, we put their sign up in the arena without bringing it to council. We had that question, what if Kim Foth leased the bar as a standalone business and wanted to put the sign for Kim Foth's Bar in the arena? And that's where our, we'll, administratively, we didn't want to answer that question. And that's why we brought it to council. Because again, maybe, if it was my business, I'd want to advertise in the arena.
Well, go ahead.
I just think that it's our responsibility for the better of the town to help businesses thrive. And helping businesses thrive is letting them advertise in, in public places, especially arena, which gets hundreds of people through there in a week. I see people walking around the arena with Nine in the Line Brewing hats everywhere. I don't think that Nine in the Line Brewing advertisement on the wall is gonna make or break a kid's alcoholism or whatever, or anything like that. I'm not sure.
I'm not sure which one, you two.
My thought is, is like, if we're looking at advertising for the arena, I think, would they be allowed to be in the school, right?
In the school?
Like, say, advertising in the, say, CRC.
They don't allow any of that.
Exactly. You know, so I kind, that's where I'm kind of like, I'm kind of torn, because I know that they just want to advertise to, to also support the community and the arena. I think that's part of the reason they want to advertise. And also, you know, they have a great business that's going on in Vulcan. But there's still part of me that's kind of torn, just because the underage and it being, you know, it's not a restaurant, per se. So that's why I'm torn.
I, I still think that there's nothing illegal about their business. There's nothing, minors cannot purchase alcohol legally there. So I don't see them being affected, one iota. If there's a Petro Canada or an SO advertisement there, they sell cigarettes and tobacco as well, are we gonna discriminate against them? I just, I don't understand what we're talking about, to be honest. To me, it's a no-brainer.
Well, I, I appreciate your comment. I never thought of that. It's an interesting comment, but on the flip side of that, it is- It's an interesting comment, but on the flip side of that, it is, it is a place where there is a lounge. There is a place where people, all, all people go there know what Nine in Line is. But that's not our duty to, just to justify it through that. This is a very, probably one of the more difficult ones to deal with because.
We brought it to council.
You're exactly right, you know, we want to bring forth business and show we stand behind it, but we also want to protect our citizenship, you know, and, and it's, it's a, it's a hard one. Good points, I, you know, you've given me a lot to think about, but it's, I guess my only thought on it is this would be an easy one if there was nothing to follow it. That's my concern.
Okay. A couple of things. First of all, what if they came to us and said they wanted to advertise, uh, in the dog park? Or at the swimming pool?
That's coming, yep.
Second of all, uh, there was another business in town, uh, during my last term that advertised stuff that was not supposed to be around kids. Because kids went there for lunch for snacks and stuff. Whatever happened to that, can, kids can still go there, can they not? Would we, did that meet the?
ALGC, that was the advertising of the cigarettes. That they were, uh, they dealt with the peace officer with the, the way that they advertised.
But they can still advertise for vaping.
Yeah, that, there was a fight with them, yeah.
That creates a gray area which is more gray than this, I think.
Go ahead.
Okay. So the AGLC says you can't advertise the product, you can advertise the business. So it means there is not going to be someone drinking a beer on advertisement, is that correct?
Correct.
So it's just going to be Nine in Line Brewing with their elevators or whatever they want to do as long as there's no beer in the, right? Or liquor on there, right?
Right.
So I don't see a problem because if a kid doesn't know what Nine in Line Brewing is and they see it up there, they're not going to think, I want to drink alcohol, there's no alcohol on the sign. No?
This morality debate isn't ours to have. It's up to the individual's parents of these children. It's not our morality debate to have because one person's rules with their children are different from the others. It's not our position to dictate that. There's no laws being broken, there's already a precedent set, it's a no brainer to me.
The only thing is, I don't know if we, do we advertise anything at the pool?
Not, not, not yet.
No, yeah, it will come.
Yeah, and same with, the same with the Ball Diamonds potentially. Or because we own facilities, um, we own the land that some of the other facilities are on, that does that govern when some, uh, puts on an event? And brings it outside, can we, or can we dictate to them that they can't advertise, you know, a company that is sponsoring an event at their event that they're renting our facilities at that's got youth?
And I think in the rodeo, I think we've done that very thing, you know.
That we dictated to them?
No, no, that we've sponsored, you know, like.
Oh, I agree, I know the Ball, Ball and, and rodeo both have had sponsorship. And I, I'm sure other, like other events too, but I mean, but it is coming, the swimming pool. I mean, when we had our budget meeting, there was a discussion about doing some advertising on the walls, fences to support some of the events. So I'm sure that this might open it. I know that, you know, golf course to agree, I mean, means if you really want to split hairs, golf course is owned by the town, even though we lease it to the golf course to run it. The, the lodge hall as an example, there's no advertising in it, but it doesn't stop them from having events in there that aren't being supported or, or by them, so. It, it's a tough one, like Cole says, it's, um, very, very difficult to.
One of the things for the purposes of this discussion that, you know, and we had it administratively is, you know, you put it up and if you get complaints, you can take it down and refund money.
Well, we can.
Well, it's, it's, it's our policy, right? It's, it's the, the question of, is it allowed? We didn't know if it was allowed. If somebody from a liquor store comes tomorrow, it, it just happened to be the brewery that, a lot of people enjoy that establishment. If, we would, we would have brought the same conversation if somebody bought the hotel and wanted to just run the bar and advertise. Or if a liquor store came to us and said that they wanted to advertise in there. We'd be having the same discussion, so that's why.
And the hotel might be, sorry, uh, the hotel might be a prime example, you know, um.
They may open the bar, but not.
Opens bar and not open anything else and it's still going to be called the hotel, you know, type thing, you know, so.
And we've let them advertise in the past.
So I mean, again, I, I guess that's, I mean, the comment too is that more or less what Richard said is that, I mean, I'm sure that we have tastefully requested what they're going to make their, um, ad look like. And so we kind of tailored, you know, I'm sure if it wasn't a tasteful ad, that they would not be allowed. You know, even though you might say that you can advertise your business, but it's not tastefully done, then it wouldn't be allowed to be in the facility anyway. So, so.
Go ahead.
Sorry.
Okay. Uh, I'm just looking, see for another example, the Oko Tokes Dogs. The kids that play on that team, they aren't all eighteen and they've got several breweries in a liquor store, advertiser there, so yeah, this is making my decision a lot more complicated than I thought.
The only thing I was thinking was again, is once you, um, this isn't a restaurant, it's a brewery. And once you, the next liquor store it says, you know, you let them, you know, they're not a restaurant, they're a brewery. I want the same rate.
That's what we're asking for.
That's exactly, and then the next one comes, the next one comes. And it's a question of time before moms and grandmas sit up there and go, why are we advertising all this stuff around all these kids? And you know what's going to happen, you know, but this, this is our dilemma and I, it's easy to see.
I think the majority of advertisements are basically directed towards adults anyways. Like it's not like kids are in there and saying, ooh, we got an accounting firm here, that's something I'm going to think about. But, um, another thing is I don't think people realize how impactful an advertisement could be to the outside town people who come in and they sit in the stands, the parents, and it puts it in their mind. There's literally hundreds of people from out of town coming in every weekend. It's a great way to promote a business in town.
With the great people back.
Yes. And I, I think it could be very, if I owned the business, I would, I would think it would be very impactful to my business having that advertisement. Especially for like a baseball tournament where we already have a Beer Gardens or whatnot. Now, I'll be honest with you, there's a lot of alcohol consumption at these Ball Diamonds, whether it's recreational games or not. It's.
And, and again too, you know, I, I think that, you know, that's up to the business to decide which, you know, and which, um, one they wish to advertise in. And I think that, you know, obviously this group here is, uh, right at the moment and I appreciate it. It's, it's a local bunch that are, you know, promoting it, but it doesn't mean that third party might come to the community and say, you know, we'd like to advertise it.
Yeah.
But, um.
And so the way we put together the recommendation was either to approve or deny, but it was a, a very specific, uh, local businesses, uh, that retail or serve liquor. So, Richard, you're absolutely right, it includes liquor stores. So if somebody came tomorrow from one of the liquor stores and asked to advertise, that's what we're asking for clarification on as well. Because those are, again, establishments in our community that retail liquor. But we're advertising their business, not their product.
Uh, this is for Cole and Will. Are there, like I know for the Logan Lakers Hockey Club, Magnus and Littlety sponsored jersey. Are there sponsors for minor hockey?
No.
Not that I see on the jersey.
You can get sponsors for things like tournaments and stuff like that. I mean, I, even when I was in hockey, I had a liquor store sponsor my team to go to a, to go to a tournament. Like these businesses, the liquor stores in town, they support all the young kids playing their game, playing sports and stuff financially sometimes, so.
That's, I guess my thoughts are, I mean, if Nine in the Line is going to support the community and we do get a liquor store that does decide to maybe finally step up to the plate and sponsor something, I guess then we deal with it at that time, um, to see someone invest in our community.
Big Sky Liquor has sponsored a band, it's the men's rec team. They've bought them jerseys, it's all over their jersey, they change their color for it to blue. I think there's, very rare there's a minor playing on them, but I mean, there's minors in the stands watching too. So I mean, yeah, they have sponsored adult teams jersey wise, but nothing for minor hockey.
I'm not, go ahead.
I have a question, um, I know tobacco can't sponsor anything.
That's right.
But liquor can still sponsor.
Yeah, and that's why we went through the ALGC stuff.
And, but you're saying cannabis stores can't.
Cannabis stores cannot because they have very specific rules under the advertising for, specific to their business today. And that's why we say the current ALCG, because if ALCG decides to change those rules, then it may open it up for this discussion, but we would make that specific to that.
So if AGLC, they decides, you know, um, February of two thousand twenty-three to make changes, we would have to abide by that?
No, no, uh, we're asking specifically on this one, because you already have the policy in place.
No, but I'm saying that if they came down, like for instance, instead of sort of like cannabis stores that they cannot be advertising and blah, 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 where there's, we would have to.
Which they currently do, yeah.
To AGLC.
Yeah, so, uh, if they were to change the rules to allow them to advertise and they came to us to, we would bring it back just like this for a discussion.
Will, you have a call, sorry.
I was just, I mean, if we're ready, I would, I would, uh, rate them, I could, I would make the recommendation to council.
I'm not ready.
That's okay, you can still make a motion.
To allow or to not, or to allow local businesses that retail or serve liquor to advertise within the town facilities, as per policy C dash zero four, and in accordance to the current AGLC advertising guidelines.
Okay, so Will has a motion on the table to allow. Okay, any discussion on this motion?
I, I'm just not ready to make that decision right now. I got to think about this a little bit, there's too many variables in this, there are way too many variables in this. You just mentioned the pool and I got grandkids that go swim in there. But you know, I got, how many kids go swim in there? I, I just, there's too many variables in this to just make a snap decision in my mind. I think it has to be thought out and discussed a little bit more, that's, that's my thought. I just, I'm not ready to make that commitment right now because I just don't think, if it was one and that was it, it would be easy. But there's way more to this than one.
And I think that's where our trust in Kim comes in there because he would still have the final veto. If someone came to, came to advertise and you'd be able to say yes or no in the end, right?
Once you set precedence, that place, you just can't say, you can't do this because we let this one. There's argument right there. As soon as you set precedence, you create argument.
That's the AGLC.
My opinion, if we disallow this, we've already done that because we've already set the precedent, in my opinion. We allow other businesses that sell products that aren't for children to advertise in our community. That's the precedent, in my opinion. It's argument set.
Okay, so any other discussion? So.
Will does have a motion on the floor.
Will has a motion on the floor. And unless somebody else wants to make a, an amendment or make another motion, uh, then we will call the questions.
I'll make another motion.
Okay.
I would like to put it off for one meeting. I would like to see a, a draft of their sign. I, I still don't, I still think it's just too quick of a, a decision.
So you're making a referral motion.
Thank you, that's what I was trying to say.
Which trumps the other motion first, so referral motion, sorry.
You got to vote on.
Yeah, so you vote on Richard's referral.
Oh, the referral, right.
And if it passes.
Debatable. Referral motion.
We have to see the debate.
Right.
So, but you're right, so if it passes.
Just trying, and then we just got to figure out how we get back to Will's motion.
But Will's motion is, is held until the next meeting.
Mm-hmm.
So I would run, have you one sound and then.
So if, if Richard's passes.
Yeah, okay, so, yeah.
So Richard's got a referral motion and if it passes, then, then it brings it back in, to the next meeting, because he's put a date on it, to the next meeting, and with more clarification from administration.
Okay, so Richard has motion to refer this to, uh, Will's motion.
No, refer the.
The topic.
Yeah, to the next meeting and ask administration to bring back information.
Procedure will by law, because Will has motion on the floor.
But this one trumps it. If it passes, it doesn't.
If it passes, then you vote back on Will's motion.
Okay.
Okay.
So everybody realizes that there's, um, Will has a motion on the floor, but Richard's trumps.
For, to defer.
Defer to the next meeting with more clarification from administration.
If it, if Richard's motion passes.
Right.
Then it moves to the next meeting.
Right.
If the motion fails.
Then Will's is on the floor.
You vote on Will's motion.
Right.
Okay, is there any clarification? I just had to go through the procedure and make sure we're not missing anything.
Okay, so Richard's got the motion, it's non-debatable, call the question. Those in favor of Richard's motion, those opposed. So it's three, three, it's, it's a tie, it's a tie, it's a loss, it's repeated. So now Will's motion's back on the floor. Okay, any more discussion on Will's motion?
Do we know, uh, if the Legion advertising the mortgage, if you're not doing it now?
I can't remember. I, I don't, I don't remember, you know, with the Legion of the Hotel or, or, you know, any of the ones that, I mean, you know, you could argue too, Legion sells food and Legion does more than just sell alcohol. You know, if you really want to argue, but I'm not saying that I can agree, but, but, you know, my argument, but.
So I just want to clarify, um, if we allow this, um, and they want to advertise at the pool, they are allowed to do this?
This is, this is, this is for all of our advertising.
Okay, Cole.
We would also have the option if that happened and it was distasteful to revoke that. Oh yeah, absolutely. Part of the policy is that it's repealed by administration.
We still are in charge of that. It's not like they can just put it up and go.
We, we actually put up the advertising, you know, like we get it here, it's inspected and then we get Public Works to put it up at the location and.
I wouldn't think administration would allow an untasteful piece of advertisement to go up knowingly that they're going to be crucified by.
Yeah.
Public.
Public.
Yeah, and, and really that's, again, that's the reason why it's here. Is that question came, we debated it here and couldn't come up with an answer and that's what you guys are elected for.
That's to get paid.
And that's, that's why you create policy as well, is because the policy is what we follow. And we weren't completely clear about this policy because after our debate, ALGC is pretty clear, they're not advertising alcohol. Our policy says alcohol, tobacco, or alcohol content. So if we followed that suit, and then again, not to go too much into our administrative debate, but if we followed those perbatim for serving or selling, we could not allow Petro Can, Gas Bar, used to be the drugstore, you know, all those things, grocery stores.
Grocery stores.
All of those served or sold tobacco products or, and so that's, that's where our conversation went. And that's where it came back around to, we, we were split, where does it lead to? What's the next thing that comes up? And so that's why we put together the recommendation we did, that this will be specifically alcohol related. Follow the ALCG rules, follows our policy, but it's local businesses that serve liquor or, or. or, uh, retail, retail it. So if you're a liquor store, yes, you qualify, if you're a brewery, yes, you qualify, if you're a restaurant, you qualify. If you're the hotel, if you're a bar, that is just a bar.
Or the golf course or.
So that's.
The curve range.
That's where we came back with, and that's why we crafted that motion for you that way. Again, denies the easy one, accepting it is, or allowing it is, but you're really just giving us direction on how to proceed on this. And again, we review everything that comes through, so it's not a blanket open, hey, anybody in town, come slap up a sign in the arena or the pool or the ball gardens or the rodeo grounds or the, so.
Okay, are any more discussion on this motion, Will's? Uh, again, is there any more discussion on this? If not, I'll call questions, those in favor? Opposed, it is carried, it's not unanimous.
Good discussion.
No, it's great to have discussion on it.
I have no problems with the discussion.
No, yeah.
I, I, I think it's great, and I, I have no problems with the business, I'm just worried about what's in the box.
I actually liked your motion, because I thought it would give us an opportunity for Judy to be involved as well.
Yes.
That's why I voted in favor of it. Then you can't tie. That's why you have seven councils, so you can't tie.
Yeah.
It was a good discussion, I thought.
Yeah, you betcha. Okay, appreciate that, we'll move on to the current business, Community Futures Highwood Board Changes. Everybody's had an opportunity to hear Ursula's philosophy or the board's philosophy of why they'd like to do this. And, uh, there is a motion crafted there, and it's specific because of, we have theoretically shares and we have to, you know, you know, there might not have been a physical share handout, but we do physically have shares, so.
And their full resolution is quite a, involved, so rather than having somebody try to leave that out, it was crafted by their legal counsel, sent out to us, it references our share at a dollar. And Ursula asked for just my signature on it, you can give that direction through, but, uh, our legal signing authority, because this is the legal document we require too, so I added the merits. And then changed the motion. And our, your motion, uh, our recommended motion would be that council for the Community Future Highwood Shareholder Resolution as presented and directs the mayor and CEO to execute the resolution on behalf of the town of Vulcan, if you're in favor of it.
What does this cost us?
Nothing.
Nothing.
We.
We'll make a dollar.
We're in a box.
Uh, we, we, we don't financially contribute to Community Futures there, so.
Matter of fact, theoretically, well, not theoretically, it would save us, because in the, for the last years, we've, years, we've always sent a counselor, because that's the way our rules are set, so we've always.
Counselor, member of large or eight mileage both ways for both of them, and.
So, so there is a, a bit of savings, which is not.
Not enough.
Is not enough.
Yeah, but I, I just gotta say that everything that Ursula said makes sense, especially to me, because I've been on there twelve months or thirteen months, and I'm still struggling to wrap my hand around all of our meetings and everything that we talk about. And then also having half of our board, the members at large that actually make the decisions on the, the loans and that kind of thing. I'm just there to listen, and I think that cutting the board down makes a lot of sense and not having a counselor.
The philosophy that the, the board has of trying to entertain, um, only, I'll, I'll use my words, like thinking people to the table is not a very good philosophy, like saying we want lawyers and doctors and accountants and, and, uh, we don't want the general laypeople that probably know more about, you know, trying to find money and trying to make it in the world without getting money, cause you've been turned down by fourteen banks in your lifetime too. Whereas a doctor or a lawyer or an accountant, some of them, not all of them, have theoretically no, um, experience other than having to deal with a client on that side. So, so I have a different bit of a philosophy that, that I think there live, somebody who's ever made that comment, you know, still lives in that never, never land, um. But again, that, that's, that's strictly what Tom Grant's opinion, that, um, I, I think that I can, I'll, I can find you ten people that can do a great job compared to one that has all the initials behind their name.
Yeah.
But can that's first.
And that's one of the conversations with Ursula about that, cause the members of large from our area, that's why they, she felt even with this coming up, that it was important that we, uh, appoint that member of large, cause we do have somebody from our area with that is business background, starting a, a fresh business, doing the loans, doing the, and worked with Community Futures, that was interested in doing it. So when I talked to her about it, you know, my side of it was, is it worth it appointing somebody if you're going to change your board structure? She said, yes, if the person's there and valuable, it'll save them a reappointment on their side. They, it'll be a board member that they must draw on to say, do you wanna stay on?
So.
I, I had the same thought as you, um, Tom, in the sense that I was thinking, I was thinking, um, I think you need more people with a lived experience, rather than just someone who, on paper, this looks good or may have this type of education, because that's not the type of people that are coming to them for those types of loans. Um, and so I think that, um, having just people from, normal people from the community, you know, whether they've just started a business or they're interested in starting a business and are wanting to contribute by volunteering on the board, I think that that, uh, is what made Community Futures very special. From my experience prior to dealing with them, I think they're wonderful, so I'm just a little concerned with some of the changes, but that's not my business.
Yeah, again, it's not mine as, as an organization, they're gonna set it up, and, but I mean, it's the same thing as that, you know, we, we talk about even politicians, you know, we put ministers or people in charge of, you know, departments or, or, you know, areas, and we say, well, they have no experience. That's not totally true, some of them have more experience just because they don't have, like I said. Again, I'm not trying to knock people that have degrees behind their name either, cause a lot of them are excellent too, but, but I think that sometimes we throw that, you know, the, theoretically, the laypeople under the bus, because they don't have that, all those initials, and, and that really bothers me, and and I appreciate, I don't know, I'm not saying that that's what she totally believes, it's just the way it came across to me that, um, I had issues with that.
Letters don't mean you have common sense. Letters don't mean you have common sense.
No.
I think that's the way she came across, but I don't know if that's exactly what she meant.
Yeah.
She, she cares a lot about that.
No idea.
She, she mentioned it would give them the ability if, if it presented itself.
Yes, and again, too, you know, the, the picking and choosing, I, I, I worry, you know, I appreciate she said that today is, you know, you don't wanna have one area of the region to have, you know, nine board members come from that region and nothing from anywhere else. And I, I, I appreciate that, uh, but it's with, without, um, putting it in there, it's pretty hard not to do it, but again, it's not my problem, it's their problem, and, uh, that's. Cool.
Um, we just see us as the one entity that, I mean, we can't go against what everybody else is doing, you know what I mean? Um, I agreed with a lot of her points.
Yeah.
On how it should function that way, so I'm, I'd be willing to, um, make a recommendation on council, or a motion that council approves the Community Futures Highwood Shareholders Resolution as presented and directs the mayor and CEO to execute this resolution on behalf of the town of Vulcan.
Thank you, Cole moves this. Any other discussion or comments on Cole's motion? Here, now we'll call questions in favor, opposed, seen none, it's carried unanimously. Okay, moving on to the library board, representative, point of request.
So, that council's very aware, we had this discussion, uh, that Liz Hammond had put in a resignation, we were gonna see some, uh, new appointments. We received a letter from, uh, uh, library board, uh, they would like to reappoint Laura Thomas to a one-year term and then, uh, approve an appointment of Deborah Wyatt for a one-year term to the Chinook Arch, uh, board. And I also added that last, uh, portion of the motion, that council acknowledged the resignation of Liz Hammond. And, and that's based on, it was part of the correspondence last time, so we just, uh, that way. If, we can simply defer to her questions, whether, uh, we acknowledged, it's, it's there as part of a motion.
Okay, so it's a two-part, go ahead.
Um, I, I would like to make the motion, um, to, uh, reappoint Laura Thomas to the Vulcan Municipal Library Board for a one-year starting November twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three.
Yeah, do you wanna do it as a three-part motion with all of them?
Or, or do you want just one?
Can do it all as one. You can do it as one, if they're.
Okay, okay, and then council approves the appointment of Deborah, Deborah Wyatt to the Chinook Arch Library Board as the town of Vulcan representative for a one-year term ending November twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three. And council acknowledges the resignation of Elizabeth Hammond from Vulcan Municipal Library Board as of October thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two.
That was a hopeful.
Yes.
Well done. Well done.
I didn't have any glasses.
That's probably the biggest.
I know, I was quick.
Hey, today? Any discussion on Barbara's motion?
Just one question, with two people having their terms up at the same time.
They, they have up to ten, so they have a fully large board.
Okay.
Okay, anything else? Here, now I'll call the questions, those in favor? It's carried, anybody opposed? Seen none, it's carried unanimously. Okay, moving on to the tax recovery auction.
So, so on November twenty-first, last Monday, we had our tax recovery auction for two properties. Uh, we had it ten AM, there was, we did have one property that did sell, so the other one did not. So, uh, three-ten Whispering Way did not sell, therefore, uh, council, as per the report, you could see the options, you could either let it sit for.
Sorry, three-eleven.
Or, sorry, three-eleven, sorry, yes. Uh, you can let it sit for fifteen years, or you can put it up for immediate sale. That again, I say immediate, we have to get it through, uh, the title and the ordination, land titles is approximately four to five months out, so we just, uh, wanted council to have that discussion, uh, on whether you would like to, and this again, is a two-part motion, if you'd like to import, and this is how we've done the majority of this, properties that have not sold. The risk is, if you don't, you can continue to collect tax on it, if you do it immediately, you can put it up for sale immediately. If you sit on it for fifteen years, you run the risk of not collecting that tax for fifteen more years as well, so.
Cool.
I guess I'm a little confused, because if we wait on it, if they're not paying taxes as it is, we're recovering it, how are we ever gonna recover anything? Fifteen more years, they have.
Yeah, so I don't see any point in waiting. That's just the MGA gives us, gives you the option on what you would like to do, missing something quite obvious.
And I can tell you, in the past, we've had a council that chose option two, not taking it back, and it came back and haunted council.
Yes.
And they're wasting legal costs.
People trying to buy it.
And, and, uh, anyway, it was not a fun event, so in my recommendations from the past history, we take it all, I think.
What reason would there be to just let it sit there for fifteen years?
If you thought somebody was gonna develop it or they were gonna pay the tax on it.
Oh, okay.
But it, it does have potential repercussions that in the past have haunted us.
The one that you dealt with was, uh, the one that had a house on it.
It had a house on it, the guy that rented, owned it, rented it, and then he ended up going, we had to put the rental towards his taxes, and then he ended up getting it back for.
Bought it back or nothing?
Bought it back from them.
For the cost of the taxes. Without, without going in camera for.
But what, other than the legal fees, cause we had lost our shirt on, the legal fees.
Which we should go in camera for. If you, yes.
But, eh.
So, as it goes, it, uh, the way we've done it, the majority is, uh, council could immediately request to, to get the title moved over, and then as soon as we, as soon as we get the notification from land titles, we, uh, list it through real estate. And, uh, we've been, obviously, with the sales that we've done in the last couple of years, we've been successful with that.
At least recovering some.
I'm for that.
So, it's a two, two-part motion, because of course, one is to request the title, and then the second part is to arrange for the disposal of, which disposal means selling.
That's where I was confused.
Yes.
Okay, Cole?
I can make both of those motions, would you like me to read them both out? Do whatever you want.
Okay.
I really wish.
You can ask me to read them too.
I'll do it. Save my literacy skills for you.
First, I have to read it up there, and like, you guys can read it off your computers. The council, the council directs administration to request the land titles office issue a new certificate of title in the name of the town of Vulcan for three-one-one Whispering Way, unit sixty-nine, uh, plan zero-five-one-two-seven-one-three as per section four twenty-four of the Municipal Government Act, and the council approves administration arranging for the disposable, disposal of three-one-one Whispering Way, unit sixty-nine, plan zero-five-one-two-seven-one-three as per section four twenty-five of the Municipal Government Act, and the town of Vulcan Policy PL zero-seven.
Okay, thank you, um, any discussion on Cole's motion? Hearing none, I'll call a question, favor? Opposed, seen none, it's carried unanimously. Okay. You, funds for tourism? Mezzanine.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Um, I'm just wondering why this is not being proposed for the budget starting January?
This is just a capital item coming out that we wanna get it done before we open.
Who's building it?
Stu.
Okay.
It's just, it's, it's just a public works thing, it's not an operational budget, so they have to ask for capital money.
Okay.
So the four thousand dollars for them to build it. Uh, Stu and Chris have been working on it since Chris got here, and it was more on the inventory, locked into that back room, things were piled everywhere, and.
Got one follow-up question.
Yes.
Stu is exceptional, what he does, um, but would there be any legality if something happens? You know, has he got, does he have a ticket behind him or anything? What I'm asking is.
For engineering on it?
Yeah, well, I'm not asking for engineering, but I'm just saying, what if something happened?
They're just extending them as an ENO, well, you've been up there.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, they're, uh, they're getting rid of that ladder to get up, putting a staircase in and extending the floor up.
Okay, yeah.
And we've, we've done several projects in the shop before.
Okay.
Really, again, it's not operational money, they were gonna see if they could put it inside the operational budget, and I took it to them and said, there's thirty-five thousand dollars in capital reserve for projects like this. Take it to council and ask for it, and this is also a good way to get you guys to know the project is, is gonna be moving forward if you approve it, and, uh, and what it's for.
I'll make the motion. Should I get reader? Uh, the council approved the construction of the mezzanine off the, off of the.
Upstairs maintenance.
Yeah, upstairs maintenance area of the town tourism center with a funding of four thousand dollars, we're drawing it from the tourism center capital reserve.
Okay, thank you, any discussion on Richard's motion? Hearing none, I will call questions in favor. It's carried, uh, opposed, seen none, uh, carried unanimously. Okay, Royal Canadian Legion, number twenty-one, the sign.
So this is a request, you've all had a chance to read the report for, uh, they would like to install a sign very similar to the one that the golf course has on the boulevard. It's basically a traffic sign that will point in at the Legion, just to give better exposure for it. Uh, they have not provided a, what the sign will look like, this is more asked for the permission, if we get it, then we'll, and again, they'll work with administration, Rita, myself, and Stu for the sign. Again, being on a boulevard, it's gonna have certain height restrictions and, uh, and size, uh, that we'll have to deal with, and it won't. Uh, we'll make sure that it does not conflict with our existing traffic signals that are in there, with the location, of course, with the railroad tracks, those sort of things, making sure we stay far enough back. So the request is to put it on the, this is the type of sign that they've requested right now, and it would be to put it just before the, uh, the entrance driveway for, uh, Westwood Maintenance.
Cool.
Well, they do sell beer there, so I'm not sure if we should have this debate advertised.
I'm against it.
I don't know, I, I don't see any issue with it myself, I think we should support the Legion as often as we can.
Well, yeah, I'm with Cole, I also, I'm, I'm honestly always wondered whether. I also, I honestly always wondered whether businesses did request this, or whether it aren't other signs for other businesses.
It's up to the business to request it.
That, yeah, and so the MPC can approve these, anything that goes on boulevard, advertising for businesses signage has to be approved by council, because you're responsible for that boulevard, even though the owners are responsible for the maintenance of. So, you know, most people don't ask for advertising that sort of stuff on boulevards until they get a visit from the police officer for not doing it correctly, is usually what it is. So, this is a, they wanted to know the process, and because this doesn't go to the MPC, it just comes directly to the council, so that's why it's here for you. Stu reviewed it, he has no issues with.
Okay. I'll make the motion that council approves the Vulcan Canadian Legion's request would install at their expense a freestanding directional sign as presented on the northwest boulevard of Center Street at the intersection of Central Road, and the installation will be coordinated by the police support. Okay, you've heard Lyle's motion, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the questions in favor. Anybody opposed? Seeing none, it's Carrie, none. Okay, CAO evaluation. Judy kind of got hit up on this one the other day, why she hasn't participated in one. For most of you that are in this room, other than Lyle, didn't get to participate in last year's evaluation of Kim, because we felt that it was after the election, it's pretty hard to evaluate somebody after only one month. So, we did the evaluation as a previous council, and so that's why you didn't see it.
I believe you did invite the counselors that were at that meeting to take in the...
Yes.
Now, this, and again, Judy, I think, from what I kind of semi-heard, is she was never involved in this, but this three-sixty evaluation that was, we have, that we usually do is something that was put in back in Dave Mitchell's era, and so it's been around for years. The three-sixty philosophy is that you get all of the councils, counselors to do it, but then we try and get three employees to do it anonymously, if they wish, and then three public. You know, so I try and find the three people. And it's usually done by the mayor, and then with the support of Karen, she usually collects the information. I collect the numbers, do the number crunching, and she takes, if you write, if anybody writes in there a comment, we add them all together, then we usually meet and go over them and decide whether we want to meet with council as a whole, with administrator, or just, you know, one or two, or just one meet with them. In the past, it's always just been me, I met with Kim, and go over the evaluation. Sometimes we get it dragged out a little longer than we want, but we'd like to try and do it within a short period of time, so we could do it and have it done and put together. So, I guess what we're doing is asking for your permission to do this, and to try and get it done within a week, and the information back, so we can put it all together and have it for the next council we need to be able to share with Kim.
So, what Karen's got back, just put together, they distribute it, and then they come back, and we try to make sure that we get it done before the end of the year for the requirement of the MGA.
And sometimes we haven't been that successful, but, you know, we try and push it to try and get it done.
Hard copy, right?
Yeah, it's just paper copy, you fill all...
That would scare me.
You can get it back, the key is getting, the key is getting it back to all as quickly as possible.
Yeah, and it's a one-to-five category, and you can go half. I, matter of fact, I appreciate, because sometimes, you know, you sit and say, well, is it a four, or a four-point-two, or four-point-five? I don't really care, just whatever number you, and again, if you want to give a zero for the category, because you don't feel that you can answer the category, and that's what happens with a lot of the questions that are in this document, some of the ones that are out in the public, they say, I can't answer them, so I just put a zero on it, and it doesn't really affect it, because it just falls off. Or, you know, so there are questions that are really quite pertinent to counselors, and then there are some that are quite general, but again, that was the philosophy of this three-sixty-one performance, is that you get people from all sides. So, you know, sometimes we picked on people that we knew had beefs against administration to fill one out, so that we can, so we can see those, you know, evaluations too. Go ahead.
I would like to make the recommendation, as it's written here, except, I'd like to take out the word, the word back.
Oh, report on the back?
Yes.
Report back, yes.
Yeah, because I think it's a great idea.
Well, we have to do it, we have to do a evaluation. This three-sixty has, has, has a bit of an advantage, in my opinion, because you're also, you're asking not just us as counselors, you're asking the staff. And now, again, it's pretty hard when you have a small number of staff like we do, two-degree, because some of them get picked on every year, almost, you know.
You got some new ones to choose this time.
Well, yeah.
These three, you just got awards tonight, so they may work.
Yeah, we already gave two. So, Barbara's made this motion to proceed with this, and again, if you can get it back by the, I know this, by the first of next week, for sure.
We have up to...
I think, I think, I think it's up to her.
Yeah, if you can give them back, yeah.
Okay.
There's a duty on my desk.
Yeah, and then you can either give them back to me, or give them back to Karen, and just so that we can kind of keep track of who's...
We can't give them back to Kim?
You can if you want.
And ideally, the lower whiteout on there. Not true, not true.
So, Barbara's got a motion on the floor, any discussion on Barbara's motion? Hearing none, I'll call the questions in favor. Opposed? Seeing none, it's Carrie, none. Thank you very much, and the old member Regional Services Commission is the only written committee one that we have right at the moment. Any, any discussion on that one? Okay, hearing none, so anybody wish to move it to be filed? I'll pick Will.
We got one reserved for you.
Okay, so you've got Will's motion on the table, any discussion on Will's motion? Hearing none, I'll call the questions in favor. Opposed? It's Carrie, none. Okay, moving on to councillor's reports, councillor Magnus.
The only meeting I had since our last council meeting was the Committee of the Whole on Friday, and that's all that I have to report here.
Okay, any questions for Lyle? Hearing none, thank you very much, we'll move on to councillor Bull.
You do. Same thing.
Nothing for you, any questions for Richard? Hearing none, well, thank you, we'll move on to councillor Ted.
I had the Committee of the Whole meeting, I had, twenty-third, I had a FRESK commission meeting, where before our FRESK meeting even started, Emily Sigurdsson, was there any, provided an update on his EMS endeavors. He let us know that he had fourteen hundred responses, I don't know if you guys got the emails, where they were looking for responses from people, just about the EMS crisis in general, and their experiences with it. Apparently, he had over fourteen hundred responses from it. He said each response was ranging from six to sixteen thousand words, so that's a, that's a lot of reading.
Mine were the small ones.
You, you had six.
He's planning to broaden his engagement to municipalities to get more of those long, long responses. They did an audit on the EMS dispatch, their report's supposed to come out within the next thirty days. He's actually reviewing it right now and putting summaries together, whatever you might be doing with that, and he's actually releasing the entire thing to the public that they found too. He wasn't able to discuss anything really specific. He said to expect a major announcement within thirty to sixty days. I think that has to do some with their fifty-two-point plan that the committee is coming up with. He's actually going to work personally in a emergency department in a hospital, at a couple of different hospitals, so that he can understand the problem better, I guess. He expects a lot of resistance from AHS, asks... He said, as elected officials, he asked that we provide feedback, we pay attention to what our, our ratepayers say, and especially positive feedback to bring that back to him, so he knows what's working. Then just to approve the interim budget, our new nine-one-one system, NG nine-one-one, the equipment and project planning is underway, the equipment's, they're here, it's just being installed. They're working on training all the dispatchers. All the municipalities must sign Tellus agreement, but we talked about that, so... And then Jason Sanders spoke in a closed meeting, just to where our EMS is going, and what his plans are with that, or where we're at. See if H board meeting, you guys know exactly what came from that, so that's pretty much everything.
Okay, any questions for Will? Hearing none, thank you very much, councillor Murray, copy?
I just had the Committee of the Whole on Friday, and prior to that, the library board meeting, and we don't have the minutes yet, but we, I believe we've just approved the plan of service, so for the next three to five years.
Okay, any questions for Barbara? Thank you, councillor Lemon.
I had no committee meetings, so I was at the Committee of the Whole meeting. I was at a hockey arena in Tabor last weekend, and I heard a lot of parents talking about our Christmas lights from Tabor parents, I guess, I assumed it's who they were, and kind of complaining about how their town council or their town doesn't do anything similar. So, that's good, I guess, so, yeah, we should be pretty proud of that.
Okay, any questions for Cole?
Right, you can see them from the corner, sorry.
Yeah, no, that's great, and you noticed in Stu's budget, or the budget stuff that he was talking about, trying to acquire more, so, because if you notice one string is probably dead, but, anyway, that's great. I had quite a few, but I did go to the golf club for Judy the other day, and it's, you know, they are pretty well status quo. They're back to kind of semi-normal year last year compared to normal years, so they'll be dipping into the money that they did really good on, and, and so they'll be doing some stuff that way. You know, other than that, I don't know much about, they bought a roller or something for the greens, and it's supposed to make them so much faster or something. If I can get a golf ball somewhere close to a green, I would be good, so I'm not a golfer. Anyway, so I went to that one for them, and for Judy, so I shared the information with her, and I'm sure she'll bring us up to speed on the next go-around. I had a SEWA committee meeting in Wheatland County. We had an in-person one, and we brought some information to the committee that the committee decided that they didn't want to share at the moment, so, and we spent more time on that than anything. Then I had a SEWA steering committee meeting, and a couple of days later, then the waste committee, and they approved their budget, so you saw the numbers. Ours went down a bit, even though the rate went up, and it was because of our population census. And so the committee, or the SEWA, I mean, the Solid Waste Authority has made the decision that we will use the census unless you do another census that's approved, change. So, everybody's stuck with their census number for this year, but yet if a municipality wishes to spend money to have a proper census done, then we'll take their numbers. Then I went to a Marcus Foundation Building Committee meeting, and I wish Judy was here so that she could bring some information on it, but it was very positive, and so they are moving forward on getting some, some stuff done on that. Committee of the Whole, again, thank you very much, everybody for staying so late. It was nice to be able to get it all done in one day, and hopefully, if you have any questions on our budget process or net budget, you can bring it back and give it to Kim or, and so they can do the number crunching. And then I had, again, a steering committee meeting today. In the next, if things go the way that we predicted, we'll, I'll have seven meetings next month to do with SEWA with this steering committee. And then we have a, got a funding meeting tomorrow for SEWA, an executive meeting on Friday for SEWA, mayor's meeting on Friday, so it's, it's been a busy month, and next month doesn't look any better for me for, for meetings. I'm hoping that once they, you know, pick the preferred candidate, and then we can release it, then the information, it'll kind of slow down a little bit until we can get the MOUs signed and sealed, and, but, you know, you know, they're saying that the MOU will probably be anywhere between fifteen and seventy-five thousand dollars to do, and then, you know, pay it on the next high level of stuff, a million and a half to two million dollars, and then hopefully, then they'll have somebody that's willing to, to build the seven-hundred-million-dollar plant, and we can start running waste. Yeah, so that's pretty well it for me, unless somebody's got some questions. Okay, thank you very much, we need a motion to file the council's request.
I have a question.
Oh, oh.
What do you do with all your spare time?
It's sleep, which doesn't really work very good.
I was going to say, my car, do you not sleep?
This morning was one-thirty, I woke up.
I thought you were retired, Tom.
I am. Okay, so Richard made this motion, any question on Richard's motion? Hearing none, I'll call the questions in favor. Anybody opposed? It's Carrie, none. Okay, move on to the action list.
As you can see, I was able to accomplish everything from the last meeting, except for, obviously, the sale, where I'm still working on that, as you most likely read in my administration report. Unless there's questions about anything outstanding, I did speak to the president of the egg society on the lease, and, you know, just working through some of the points on that as well, they don't seem... They're, yeah, we're making sure we're getting it right, anyway. Other than that, unless there's any questions.
Okay, any questions for Kim on the activity? Okay, if not, move on to the CEO department.
So, it's been a, it doesn't look as much, but it was a pretty hectic couple of weeks with putting everything together, so... You've had a chance to read my report, I said that the Tellus and Trynus switch over from Axia to Tellus was ongoing. We finished that today, we were down for a couple hours, and probably saw some glitches in your emails, but I think we have that all resolved. QP showed up midweek, so we started negotiations and got wrapped to a point where I can actually bring it to council, so we're obviously going to do that next. So, worked with SEMA for the industrial easement information, also got the background on, on that change in weather and construction, and they're going to come with a formal request to council to finish the stormwater drainage and topsoil laying in the spring, so that they don't have to do anything with the frozen ground, so... Again...
Do you have a timeline on that?
We did, a hundred and twenty days, we're still within it, but that's basically what they're going to ask us for an extension to come into the spring, so... We got everything set up, you can see that we completed orientation for Amanda, obviously, she was in attendance at the, at the Committee of the Whole. To Will's point, we did already sign the Tellus new gener, next generation nine-one-one agreement, so we need Foot Hills Regional Emergency Services Commission as our, as our vendor for that, so we've got that done, so Tellus will now share that information. We, as you saw, did a ton of work on budget. We moved some desks around here to accommodate Amanda's and Genesis' transition. Did some policy info for, uh, our neighboring CAOs, um, those changes, new CAOs coming in place. There are a lot of them are doing policy upgrades, so I'm helping them with, uh, the things that we have. Again, uh, we've had some community never acquire, is sort of liquid dumping is pretty, it's, we have one specific company that's just trying to figure out how they can, they can do that. We're, uh, checking with Elrard environment to see what kind of regulations is they can. They can be a little intrusive if. And, uh, council members, IT, industrial updates, property sale, um, just normal questions throughout. Uh, you can see the meetings that I attended. Uh, I had the federal provincial economic development, uh, specialists, uh, through Zoom. Uh, we had a very good meeting. They, uh, Linda, who used to be at the provincial level is now at the federal level, so they've got a new, uh, provincial correspondent as well. Really good to keep in contact with them to share ideas and those sort of things. Reading tax recovery, obviously we did the auction here. It was a little lonely, but at least we had somebody, so. Pristine homes were in, uh, talking about the health and options where, uh, most likely going to be trying to move forward with the realignment of that road that from, uh, the land use by law that we amended to allow for multi-bedroom residential in there. So we're gonna probably bring back that, uh, that road amendment here as soon as we can get ours to. And that again, that application is going to come from, uh, the applicant, so, uh, they have to do the survey and all that, so we'll just wait until they're ready to do that. But we've got the majority of the background work done. Uh, QP, been working with negotiations. Again, this is, uh, we're going camera, but the whole team is new, so it's, it's been quite an adventure. I also attended the Marcus Foundation Building Committee meeting. A lot of good stuff coming forward with that. And, uh, obviously the committee of the whole, so. You think it's interesting to try to go through in a couple of hours. It's a year, but not together, so I do appreciate all the work that you, you guys have all the questions. It really does help us out. That's my report.
Okay, any questions for Kim? Okay, need a motion to file. Will?
I think it's getting close to the end.
Well, there was two that were close, so.
Is there one's got the Jimmy here?
So we'll move something. For the, um, registration reports?
Well done.
Well done.
You have to save the meeting on this, uh.
Are you?
I was gonna, because we're really close meeting, but I think you have to save the meeting.
We have to, we have to.
You have to quote on the last one.
So any discussion on this motion? Hearing none, call questions of the favor. Is carried unanimously posed? Seeing none, it's carried unanimously. Okay, we need to go into closed session. Okay, Will moves up.
And it is
It is.
Eight fifty three.
Yeah, eight fifty three. Are we kicking Karen out or is she staying?
No, uh, unless this, this is, uh, just for the, uh, members of collective agreement, so.
Okay. Okay, so we, anybody, any discussion on Will's motion? Hearing none, those in favor. Posed, it's carried unanimously going camera. Okay, so we're officially in camera. So then what we'll need is a motion to come out in camera.
Yeah.
We'll kick that motion.
Where's Hans all over the place?
Who's that?
Lyle moves us out at nine twenty two. Any discussion on Lyle's motion? Hearing none, call question in favor. Anybody opposed? Seeing none, it's carried unanimously. Seeing none, I need one word. It's adjourned.
Like to make the motion to adjourn.
We need to get our packages from Karen.
Don't we need to? No, no, because you, you can expect, you can, but I, I've already moved forward with, uh, I hear the discussion.
So Will moves us out and, uh.
Lyle moved you out.
No, yeah, Will, Will moves us adjourned. All favor?
Yep.
We are officially adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody.
And Karen's getting, are you gonna grab us those back?
Yeah, I'll go right away. I expect to finish putting my notes in.
Since breakfast. Really?
You what?
Okay, girlfriend at home cook for you.